Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for joining us virtually and those who are here in person. Thank you. It is now 5:01 PM and the chair calls this meeting into order. So before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to make sure we have, we do a roll call just to make sure that we have quorum. So we start with trustee Mario.
President.
Trustee Soma.
President.
Trustee Pierce. Not here yet. Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee vote. He's not here. Trustee Kane, I believe he did mention that he would not be joining us today. And trustee yours Wilson.
I'm here. Trustee Pierce, I think she.
I'm here. I am here. You know, I'm in my car. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to try to.
Have to have your camera on.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Pierce, just make sure that before we vote, just to make sure you have your camera on, please. Can you hear me? Okay, we'll check back with you on that. So if you can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Head, has the meeting been properly posted and certified?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you, sir. We do not have closed session. And I believe that we have public comments. Desiree?
Yes ma'am, we have several public comments for tonight and I'd like to start with Dr. John Bergduff, please.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. John Bergduff, president of the American Federation of Teachers here at Lone Star College. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you again this evening. Now that the fall semester has started, I want to share with you a project that our union plans to work on this year. Over the last couple of years, we have noted an increase in the number of employees coming to us with concerns about their individual work situations. From one point of view, this is a good thing. AFT and Lone Star administration have built a positive track record of resolving problems together at the lowest possible level. And a growing number of employees are learning that they can trust this process. So for that, I am grateful. However, we are hearing many of the same themes repeated and that leads us to believe we should also take a broader approach. Employees often tell us that they feel their contributions are not understood and that some groups of employees are treated differently from others. There is no doubt in my mind that the stress and isolation we have all endured through the pandemic contributes to this sense. AFT's major priority for this year is to foster communication and positive interaction between the three main categories of Lone Star College employees, faculty, staff, and administrators. Our goal is to build greater understanding and trust in order to further mitigate problems at the lowest possible level. In order to know how to help, we first need to understand what employees are feeling about their own work situations and their interactions with others. We believe we are in a unique situation to study this because we operate outside of official Lone Star College structures and therefore hope that we will encourage our colleagues to be candid. So we will begin with a climate survey that will be sent to all college employees later this month to ask folks to share with us both their positive experiences and their concerns about their jobs. Both full-time and part-time employees will be included. Our survey last year about returning to work after COVID garnered over 1,000 responses. We are hoping we can get that many or more this year. Importantly, I want to point out that we will be sending this survey to administrators as well as faculty and staff. Because it is very much the case that deans, vice presidents, presidents, vice chancellors, and even the chancellor may feel that they are misunderstood and unappreciated. And those concerns are very important to us as well. Our plan is to follow up with some focus group discussions to explore whatever trends may come up in a deeper fashion. Our survey will not ask employees to identify themselves and will be run through a server that neither the college nor the union controls. We will guarantee strict anonymity of everyone's responses, but we will report on any trends that come up that need attention. In fact, we will make certain that the board and system administration hear any information we learn first. This process will take us into the spring and we will use what we learn both to instruct us on trust-building activities we can promote and potential concerns that could be addressed with college procedures and policies. We want the data to drive the decisions, so we are going into this project with no preconceived notions. Most importantly, this process is about making life better for all of us at Lone Star. It's not about finding fault or casting blame on anybody or any category of employee. Ultimately, this is a journey all of us across the system can travel together. With the college's 50th anniversary at hand and with all of us figuring out what the new normal for higher education will look like, we believe the timing is both auspicious and critical. In conclusion, we'd like to invite all employees here tonight in this room and also all employees watching remotely to keep an eye out for our survey coming later in September. Your input is important to us and we respectfully ask you to tell us exactly what you're thinking. Wishing all of us a fantastic school year. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Chair Salazar. Are we not having closed session?
We're not having closed session.
Okay, alright.
Okay, I would like to call Alex Harris, please. Okay, we'll go on to Tina Orbaugh. Okay, Susan Scruggs. And Edward Scruggs. Does not appear there in attendance.
Okay. Thank you, Desiree. We're next going into the introduction special guest of recognitions.
Yeah, so we have Jamie Swinerton from the Houston Chronicle. And Jamie, where are you? Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to make sure that the board knows who the faculty senate presidents are this year. They're all right here, I think. So if you would just kind of wave when.
So we have them stand.
Oh, you want to stand up? Okay. So Sandra Harvey from Cyfair, Brandy Ford from Houston North, and Jennifer Chowdy from, I don't know whether Jennifer's here or not. She's not here, okay. Chase Waite from Montgomery. Jennifer Welch is from North Harris. Welcome. She's new to the group. Kimberly Ball is online. For North Harris. And Ginger Frey is Tom Ball. And she's been around for a while. You're not old, you've just been around for a while. And then Martha Donnelly from University Park, just new. So that's our faculty senate. And Jennifer just sent a note and said she's here virtually. So she's.
Hi Jennifer.
Thank you Jen for sending a note. So probably at the next meeting, I'll introduce the Professional Support Staff Association. So I meet with the faculty senate presidents. When we had, when life was normal, we were meeting about once a month. And then so we have meeting, a meeting next week, I think. Yeah, right. And so, and I received your questions. Thank you. And, and the same thing with the PSSA. We've been meeting with them. So we meet, so they meet with the presidents. I mean, they report, they're reporting into each individual campus, but when we meet, it's about broad, system-wide issues. So we have a pretty close relationship. Same thing with the PSSA. So they're a pleasure to work with most of the time, right? No, we actually have a good relationship, so.
All the time.
Yeah.
So thank you so much, Senate presidents, for all that you do for our students. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next item, which is the workshop.
So we wanted to, at the last meeting, we talked about having a workshop to talk about the issues with a homestead exemption. And so we have about nine slides and I've asked Jennifer Mont, our CFO, to run through these with you so you can see what the issues are. There's no action items tonight. So we just wanted to lay out to the board and really the community what the issue is and what the financial issues might be for us. And before Jennifer talks, there is.
So just real quick.
Desiree, hold on.
Just, just real quick, I know we have some of our guest speaker, sorry, some of our speakers. I'm sorry, not speakers, but some of our public comments are here. So let's do those first before we proceed with the workshop, Jennifer, if that's okay.
It's either Mr. Scruggs or Ms. Scruggs.
We will, Edward Scruggs will be first.
Thank you for the time. I'm sorry we were late. We were thinking you were doing your normal routine at five and then you were going to reach us and reconvene at six. So, sorry, we were late. Today I want to talk to you a little bit about your budget, but mostly about your mission and vision statement. Page 23, number five, says fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers and to the citizens. And in case you have forgotten, I'm going to read what a fiduciary, excuse me for being out of breath. That's a, I'm short of wind. But anyway. It, it means a person or an organization that makes a financial, makes financial decisions on behalf of another party who is legally obligated to act in their client's best interests. And I'm not sure that's happening here with this board with regard to our tax exemptions. The, and that means that you're required by law to put us first in your deliberations and your, in your considerations, your monetary considerations. So I think we need to get to that point and I'm not sure we're there yet. I had a couple of questions about your, about your budget. You said enrollment is not going to have any growth this year. I'm not sure if you have your final numbers for the fall yet, but I would like to know what those are at some point. Then you said you're not going to increase your student tuition by more than eight percent. But that other tax revenues may be increased to cover expenditures. So is that part of the fiduciary responsibility to your taxes, to your, to your tax base? The sixteen and a half percent increase in taxable assessment values had no, no changes in your total tax rate. So if you're expecting a pat on the back for no change in the tax rate due to the increase in taxable assessed values, you're mistaken. You should have applied that increase to the homestead exemption. And then on page, I have a few more minutes, okay. From page 63 to 68, your numbers are missing on the right-hand side of the page. Didn't print all the way. So the right-hand side of the page has half of the numbers missing, so I couldn't really tell much about that. But you might want to redo that next time. I think that the auxiliary fund, and this is, I don't, I didn't write down the page number on this, but the auxiliary fund is the, I guess, is a transfer of your, of your your surplus from the prior year to the 22, 23 budget. It was seven and a half million dollars. So I'm not sure what that was used for. It didn't say, but I was wondering why that was not applied to the homestead and over 65 exemption. So there are a lot of holes in that budget that could be used for that and I'd just like for you to consider that. But first of all, you do have a fiduciary responsibility to your tax, taxpayers and to your citizens. And I'd like to see you start here, manning up to it. Appreciate your time and I'm sorry again that we're so late. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm Desiree.
Yes ma'am, Susan Scruggs. Good evening. Good to see you. I'm back here again to talk about homestead exemption. And I've discussed this about the people in the county having really rough times right now with inflation and gas prices and everything. And I wanted to make a couple of points on that. There is a lending company, it's called Social Finance Lending Company. It tracks foreclosures all over the nation. They published a statistic that I thought was quite interesting. In March of 2022, there was a 248% increase in foreclosures in our nation compared to 2021 March. A lot of people are losing their homes. And there's another company called Adam. They are a data gathering company. They supply financial companies and real estate companies, various real estate data. They published information about the state of Texas and from June, excuse me, from January till June of 2022, there have been 11,527 property filings for foreclosures. This is one in every 1,005 households out of a total of 11,589, 324 housing units total in the state of Texas. And Texas is the second most populous state behind California. So what we're witnessing is horrendous losses of homes, not only in our nation, but in our state and in, since 2008. And it's, the difference is investors are swooping in and buying up these homes at rock bottom prices. And the homeowners unfortunately, who are forced out of their home probably won't be able to buy another home because of the enormous increase in housing prices. This is a very sad situation. I'm just asking you folks to really look into your budget and figure out how you can do a homestead exemption for the people who have supported you for so many years in Montgomery County. I myself will not benefit. I have an over 65 exemption. It's frozen. I'm up here because I feel strongly about taxing entities giving back to the county in their times of need. And this is a time of need for the people who have been so good to y'all for so many years. So I'm asking that you please return the additional homestead exemption to your taxpayers and that you would put forth a resolution or a motion to adopt this additional exemption tonight, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we can have Jennifer join us and just to make sure that we do have it on record that trustee vote is here.
Okay, thank you trustees for the workshop tonight. Yes, I would like to cover, there's a particular focus on the homestead exemption certainly. But I am doing really all property tax exemptions, beginning with at a glance. And some of this many might already know, but I did want to just start with just the very basics of property tax exemptions and how these work. So what happens is for everybody's home that they might own, the appraisal districts, either Harris County Appraisal District, Montgomery County Appraisal District, they do the appraised value of the homes, which may not be the same as the market value, but they determine the appraised values. Then separately, every individual taxing entity sets its tax rate, right? So just the tax bill is that appraised value times that tax rate. Now, any property tax exemptions that a person may have, the amount of that exemption comes off of the appraised value when that is then multiplied times the tax rate to get the tax bill. So the amount of the exemption does become savings on that taxpayer's bill. So it lowers the tax bills. There are multiple different types of exemptions that are offered. Some are total, some are partial exemptions. And then also from the state, there are some exemptions that are mandatory that all taxing entities must offer. And then there are other exemptions that are called a local option, where it is up to each individual taxing entity to determine whether that taxing entity will offer that exemption. So that right there does mean that even within a person's single tax bill, right, within your tax bill, there's going to be a list of the multiple taxing entities on your bill and each of their tax rates times your appraised value. Within one bill, it could be that this entity or that entity offers one exemption and then others on that same type tax bill might not. Since those are referred to as the local option exemptions. Now, most of these exemptions, most of them do require some form of application for the exemption. And we go to the next slide, please. So this is a summary list of the major types of property exemptions. And these are all of the ones that would apply to Lone Star College. There are some other ones that may apply to other taxing entities, but not us. So the first two are ones that are mandatory. So we must offer these, all community colleges must offer these. There's the disabled veterans exemption, surviving spouses exemption. And then there's two exemptions that are this local option. There, the three, I suppose, age 65 or older or disabled persons, and then also the residence homestead exemption. Now, so for these exemptions, Lone Star College, we can make the choice then. Several things, several variables can go into our choice. The first being whether to offer them or not. And the second being how much do we want to offer? We could set a fixed dollar value or percentage. There's a wide range of what amount of the exemption do we want to offer. A third choice is within the age 65 or older or disabled person's exemption is we can also make the choice of whether to include a tax freeze. That is optional. One could offer an exemption dollar amount and not do the freeze. The residence homestead there, if that is offered, then that automatically does include a 10% cap on the appraised value growth from any one year to the next. So on these, where Lone Star College is, is we have set a $75,000 exemption on age 65 or older or disabled persons, and we have set the tax freeze. That is already where we are at today. The residence homestead exemption, we do also offer that one at 1%. That one could be up to 20%. But Lone Star College historically has set it at 1%. So this and the next couple of slides is again just to kind of give some comparisons to give just kind of a sense of what sort of dollar amounts we're talking about here. This one is using the Lone Star College tax rate is intended to give an idea of how much could be saved by these various exemptions. What we have used here is the average home value for our district is 285,000. So for that average home value with these different exemptions, you would see first with no exemptions, the tax bill to Lone Star College would be $308. If someone had, for example, the over 65 exemption, that 75,000, that saves them $81 on their tax bill. That, and then that does not include what is saved by the tax freeze there. In the case of the homestead exemption, which is 1% or a $5,000 minimum, there, that taxpayer would save $5 because in the case of 1%, that is applying for 285,000, 1% is less than 5,000. So the $5 is off of that $5,000 exemption. Then this chart. Again, that last one was to just give a sense of what savings could come from each of the individual exemptions. This one is to give a sense of the tax rate of differing taxing entities within our area. We tried to get as close to what sort of might be a sample bill for someone in our district. I could, we could not get there exactly because of course it's highly dependent on your particular address. So this is just a sampling and that's why I didn't include a total. But so for example, and this is ranked highest to lowest, Conroy ISD is on here, but this is true really of all ISDs is that they are typically one of the highest tax rates on a person's tax bill. So in this case, Conroy ISD has a tax rate of $1.176 and this is per $100 assessed value. And Conroy ISD offers a $25,000 homestead exemption. So under this scenario, with the homestead exemption, the tax bill from the ISD would be about $3,000. There's also mud districts. Here we took an average of mud districts because there's a very large variation between tax rates of mud districts. Some mud districts that are older ones and have finished paying off their infrastructure are at zero tax rate. Others are at, I saw one that was at $1.80 even above ISD rates. So there's a large variation in muds. But the average was around 83 cents. So in that example, the tax bill would be about $2,300. So again, these are just meant as examples. And you see here again, Lone Star College at our tax rate for the past several years has been 10.78 cents. With the homestead exemption, the tax bill would be $302. So again, here, I'm trying to put Lone Star College where we currently are at in the larger context. First with the, you know, potential savings from different exemptions, the last slide being what other taxing entities' tax bills might be. And now I want to show us in comparison to the 50 community colleges in Texas. So first showing here the senior and disabled property tax exemptions. Here, among all 50 community colleges, we do offer the fourth highest exemption level at the 75,000. So we offer a 75,000 exemption and the tax freeze. And, and this is where, for the community colleges on this chart, I couldn't get the chart in a way where I could also identify who applied the tax freeze without it looking complicated. But there are others. So for example, both Houston and San Jacinto at, you know, 120,000, 130,000 exemption levels. In those cases, they don't offer the tax freeze. So they have a higher exemption level, but they don't apply the tax freeze. And so it's a mixed bag kind of throughout this list of, you can offer an exemption with or without that tax freeze. So that was the senior and homestead. Here is the homestead exemptions. Here we are at the 13th highest among the 50, but that is with about 33 or so community colleges out of the 50 who don't offer any homestead exemptions. So there is about 17 or so that do offer some level of exemption. And you can see where we are on this list here at the 1% rate. Now here, since it is a sort of a smaller batch of community colleges among the 50 that do offer the homestead exemption, I wanted to show a chart with just those. This, now this chart is only those community colleges that do offer the homestead exemption. And I wanted to show this also with the various tax rates for each community college. The solid red line is what shows each community college's tax rate. And just to help ourselves with the visual, the comparison, it's the dotted red line that shows Lone Star College tax rate. So here, did want to note that for all of the community colleges that. So here, did want to note that for all of the community colleges that offer the full twenty percent homestead exemption, their tax rates are are higher than ours. And we have noted this within budget presentations that historically we have worked hard to keep our overall tax rate low. Among some of the lowest of the fifty community colleges. So that was to kind of help get us a feel for where Lone Star College stands in our exemptions. And the next I wanted to go through the particular item that to be taken up for consideration is whether we want to increase our homestead exemption level. Now, what this chart shows is just a snapshot in time as of right now. If we were to increase our exemption. Now legally, in terms of this current tax year, we are not able to do that because we have passed the deadlines to do so. But I just wanted to show sort of this hypothetical snapshot in time of if we were to increase the homestead exemption level, what would that impact be on both the taxpayer and on Lone Star College? And this is where you can see all the way up to the twenty percent, a taxpayer would save about fifty-six dollars a year. And the impact on Lone Star College would be about seventeen million dollars. And now here, of course, that is quite a disparity between those. And this is where I would say that for Lone Star College, we have a very large and healthy tax base. I've mentioned that before in our budget presentations. Because that is not true for all community colleges, that we have a very large and healthy tax base, which allows us to have the impact of property taxes spread out among a large significant population. So this is why where you're going to see a significant difference between the impact on any given individual and then the total impact on Lone Star College. And so here in this consideration, I would say seventeen million is four percent of our budget. As CFO, I would say having that kind of impact on us all at one time would be a significant thing. For context, when COVID first hit in that first COVID year, we did make a five percent across the board budget reduction. So this size of an impact, it's not impossible, but it is definitely something that has a significant impact on our operations to absorb all at one time. So with that, that's why I would like to present here considerations of running various scenarios of a phased-in approach. If Lone Star College wishes to increase the level of the homestead exemption. This is just one scenario, and it could be any number of scenarios. This one is just a scenario of if we increased the homestead exemption by about four percent a year for five years would get us up to the full twenty percent. Now, like I said, that's just one scenario among many. And this would show the impact of that on taxpayer savings and on Lone Star College. Now here, we have factored in estimates for future appraised growth. So where you saw the twenty percent saved fifty-six dollars on the prior slide, here you see five years out seventy-two dollars. The reason for that is, like I said, we have factored in assumed future increases in appraised values. Same thing for the impact on Lone Star College. So with these impacts here, I wanted to present it today as a starting point for further consideration for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget year. And I know I've said a couple of times, this is just one scenario among many that we could do for a phased-in approach for increasing the homestead exemption. I think it'll be important to view this scenario and other scenarios in the context of our full five-year financial plan. So we can see the impact on our cash reserves, on our operations. Because we are at a point right now where we have made, I mentioned the five percent budget reduction that we made when COVID hit. And we have continued to make additional budget reductions since then with enrollments being down, right? Each time that our revenues have fallen short, we have made the corresponding operational budget reduction. So right now, we are on the heels of making multiple years worth of budget reductions now. And COVID stimulus funds are ending this year. We also need to start factoring those COVID initiatives that we started into our operational budget. So I would like us to review this and other scenarios for the homestead exemption within that larger context of our financial plan. And also, once we have better information on where our enrollments are this year, as well as the the state legislature is meeting this year. And so February, right? Each February is generally when we do a board budget retreat and review in depth that five-year financial plan. So I think that would be a good opportunity to continue this discussion between now and then and be able then to also have that full picture of considering the homestead exemption.
When our discussions board, we, again, keep in mind, we have a budget retreat. And you you would have to make a decision by July one, I believe, is the deadline for the homestead exemptions. But I'm going to talk just a minute about where we are with our credit hours. We're actually down one point four percent right now, which is a million dollar cut. And we're still not quite sure. We're not going to know what the state's doing until after the first of the year. So our recommendation is let us come back to you in a couple of months. We'll know what our financial situation is. Then we'll be better able, I think, to kind of zero in on what this what this looks like. So because you can't do anything right now, anyway. I mean, you you nothing, the deadline for this current fiscal year has already passed. So we're talking about the twenty-three, twenty-four or FY twenty-four year.
Do we have any questions or anything for Jennifer?
I do. I have a couple, if you don't mind. Jennifer, if I understand your numbers here, just looking at the the last set of numbers, FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What we're talking about based on the numbers shown is about six dollars a month savings to to residents. Is that correct?
Approximately.
And this doesn't take into account time value of money. Doesn't take into account anything the appraisal districts will do and property values, which we it's difficult to predict. It does not take into consideration what enrollment may be, which has been somewhat steady, but very is variance there, right? In the last couple of years, the COVID and other now, but you know, economic situations. So this would be, I would say, a happy path scenario. If indeed we could do this. I mean, from the percentage wise, you know, if the numbers made sense, but you have to factor in these, you have to make some assumptions and to factor in these other economic impacts to see where it's going to be. Now, let's, Kim, let me try to put this in perspective and ask your help and maybe the chancellor's help here. For twenty-two million dollars, if we took twenty-two million dollars out of our budget today, what would, what's the, what would that equate to in consequences? Let's say, I mean, where would we take it? I mean, we take it from reserves, we essentially come under scrutiny, whether from financial institutions, whether we can, you know, make our bonds or not. That's, you know, may affect our credit rating. If we take it from our operations, then something has to give. You know, some some programs have to have to be dialed back or maybe eliminated. When we're really, I think, the, you'd correct me if I'm wrong here. You know, we're we're being encouraged to increase our programs, especially in workforce, to provide opportunities to people, you know, who are coming out of college, or should I say coming out of high school and with the dual credit. Being able to give them opportunities earlier in life. So there's a lot of variables here, is what I'm saying. And and the impact, and I just want to say, we we are fiduciary responsible. We are. I mean, let me tell you, I'm seventy years old, you know? I I've lived in this district all my life. And I pay taxes as everybody else pays taxes. Nobody wants to pay taxes. And I really sympathize with those who 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 six dollars a month may mean something to them. I do. And God bless them. But, you know, we have to balance this out, and that's and that's my point here. I think, you know, we're not saying we're not going to do anything. I think we're we have an intent to try to do something. But the impact of such, we need to set expectations with those real impacts are going to be over over a period of time as you you've laid out here in current dollars. So I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm getting redundant here. So, thank you.
Yeah, a few comments if I could I could make first, yeah, correct, the time value of money is not factored in here in terms of growth and appraised value. We have included an assumption for that here. It is five, five percent next year and then three percent thereafter. So that is factored in, but that is just a estimate, such guess of what future appraised value growth is in terms of where would it come from? We certainly do have cash reserves. If that could cover this, it could cover it, you know, for, you know, a year. Cash reserves is a one-time funding source, and this would be an annual recurring impact. So we would need an annual recurring funding source and cash reserves. Even covering it for some period of time could not be that permanent funding source. Beyond that, in terms of where in operations, that would have to be, yes, that would have to be a decision of the board and administration as to what operations to make budget reductions.
I just want to point out a couple of things that we've that we've spent some time talking about. I'm not, I don't think the sky is falling, but we need to be prepared for recession. I hope it doesn't happen. But if we have a reduction in home values, then that clearly that impacts us. We had fifty-two million dollars in damage from the hurricane, fifty-two million. And we have to be prepared to self-fund our construction. And we still haven't received, shoot, we're going to talk about it tonight, about we're still waiting on funds from FEMA and TIDOM. And we've increased our insurance and so I mean, just the reality is for us to get up and running again if and what happened was flooding. Yeah, now that may not happen again, but we also got hit by a tornado over at Saffir. And if a tornado hit one of our buildings, that right now to replace that would be forty or fifty or sixty million dollars, depending on the building. So we need to have that cash on hand, probably more so than you would your house so that we can go out and get that done instead of waiting on insurance or the state or anybody else. We we just can't count on that. I mean, after five years, we still don't have what, I'm not saying anything within, we were entitled to anything, but that's just part of the way FEMA operates. It's just going to, we have to plan on a five-year turnaround if we're waiting on somebody else. So so all those factors, in addition to what you said, yes. We, the way we made this happen last time was they cut expenses. We we had a separation incentive plan, we cut positions. We eliminated two hundred positions and then we had a freeze on maybe what, two hundred positions overall, something like that, where we didn't allow people to replace people. So yes, four percent of our budget is a big hit. And actually, on a cumulative, on the five-year period, that's a sixty million dollar hit, right? Is that what you have up there?
Cumulative five-year impact.
So, I mean, we just, what we're asking for, I mean, there's no decision to be made today, but we want to come back and take a look at all this and see how things. We'll have a much better understanding of our finances right after the first of the year. I think we'd be able to tell, not only from the state, we'll be able to tell what our enrollments are. And then we'll be able to see what the economy looks like. So we clearly understand.
I'm sorry, I thought you was finished.
Go ahead.
Are we basing these numbers off of Lone Star just giving every homeowner the exemption increase, or will the homeowners have to apply? Because not every homeowner might might have, you know what I'm saying, is going to apply. So are we just basing these numbers off of this is what we're going to do, or will they have to fill out an application and apply for the exemption?
You do have to fill out an application for the exemption. But many people already have because us, we do already offer the homestead exemption of one percent. And other taxing entities also offer their own homestead exemption. So we were able to build our estimates using the existing appraised values of of those properties that we know already qualify for the homestead exemption.
How many people have actually applied for the exemption?
I would have to get that number and get back to you on that. The appraisal district would have that number, but I can get it.
Okay, yeah, I need that number because if if we don't have, like, it's a lot of people in Lone Star's area. And not, if not a quarter of them apply, then are those numbers really realistic, I guess is my question. You know what I'm saying? So that I need I need to see how many people actually applied for the, at least the one percent.
Sure. Yeah. So since this is using numbers of people that already qualify, if there are people who have not applied, if anything, that would cause additional applications and cause these numbers presented here to be higher.
Right. That's why I'm asking because there's no number. It would be different if you had a number. Let's just say we've already had a hundred thousand people apply for the one percent, you know what I'm saying? And so the more people that see, oh, well, maybe Lone Star is going to give an increase so I can get a tax break or I can breathe a little bit, then that number would increase. But see, on the on these charts, it's just, you know, it's no real number of how many people have actually applied. So I guess that that's why I'm asking, are these really like the realistic numbers? And do and how would people know to apply unless we're sending out information saying, or something's going out a newsletter or some kind of marketing thing that says, hey, you know, Lone Star is going to increase the homestead exemption, you have to apply by this date to get this. So, I mean, how many people actually know that you all are, you know, they have to apply for the one percent exemption, I guess is another question. So we can't, we 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 need to be more conscious of people, of thinking for people because sometimes life is busy. And not everybody is thinking about, let me fill out this application for this college to get this exemption. Especially if you are new, if you have a new homeowner that don't even know to fill out the application to get the exemption. You understand what I'm saying? So I just think we need to be a little bit more think a little bit more for the, you know, for our taxpayers, our tax base and the people who are we we are responsible for. So that's just my input, but I would like the numbers if you have them, please.
Just a point of clarification regarding the the application for tax assessment. That that comes from the appraisal district. If I remember, I'd get a postcard each year because I read my mail. And it says, you know, if you haven't applied for an exemption, you can apply, and it's simple to apply. You basically check the card, sign it, send it in. So that's a taxing district function, is it not? I mean, we don't send that stuff out.
The appraisal district, correct? We generally do not send that stuff out. And if anything else, say there, people should be careful because there's also a lot of entities that will try to offer to apply for you for a fee when
Right.
you can apply for free. So, you know, that is generally an appraisal district.
It's not a difficult thing. People have
I get it, but people don't always read the mail on time or they don't always look. So I'm saying as Lone Star, how can we be responsible to make sure we're getting this to our voters? That's all I'm asking. It's it's not difficult, but they give you a number of how many people are applying because you have to know. Is what I'm saying.
Look, we can start to look into something like that, but I mean, we do receive notices by mail from the tax office.
I understand, but are you understanding what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can put it in our literature. I understand what you're saying. We can put that in our literature and make sure that people know with the homestead exemption and how to apply for it. So
A lot of people don't read it because they think it's probably from Harris County.
Right.
Or you know what I'm saying? They don't know that it's including Lone Star. We have to be mindful.
Right.
Do we have other trustees with comments? Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. Have to collect my thoughts again after the discussion. I want to go back.
Maybe a little closer to mine.
Thank you.
We're just having a hard time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You bet. Thank you for the reminder. And there's a little card that tells me to hold it close and I put it off to the side. My apologies. Okay, so I have to collect my thoughts after those comments, but could you go back a couple of slides to Lone Star College tax exemptions? I think it's slide five. Thank you. One advanced one, please. There you go. All right. So that's what I've got here. Okay, so on this slide, you had first said, I think, that you had ranked them highest to lowest. If that's the case, then why is Lone Star listed second?
What do you mean Lone Star College listed second?
Yes, ma'am.
We have
Oh, I'm sorry, on the slide that I'm looking at, nevermind. I remember now there was some revision. Okay, so disregard that comment. So what I was going to comment on is that there's been a lot of discussion from the public. So what I was going to, uh, comment on is that there's been a lot of discussion from the public about Montgomery County. And any taxing action that we take at Lone Star will affect all counties where we have taxing authority. We cannot single out Harris County anymore so that we can single out Montgomery County. So anything that we do will affect every county that we're in, where we have the ability and the authority to file taxes. That's just a fact.
Correct, yes, I did just pick a sampling here, I could have just, we could have just as well done Harris County, I think we picked it from, we looked at a tax bill of someone who was here in the
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with what you did, and if you would have listed it, I would still make the comment, because the public discussion has been isolated to Montgomery, and no county can achieve a benefit, uh, in Lone Star's, uh, territory that another county doesn't. With respect to the homestead exemption form, in, in certainly don't want to, I respect trustee Ayers Wilson and her comments. Uh, once again, no jurisdiction can have its own application for an exemption. Property owners apply to the appraisal districts for a homestead exemption. If you qualify for homestead exemption, you get a homestead exemption. And then under that is, are, rather, are all the jurisdictions that will, that have homestead exemptions for property owners, and keep in mind too, this is only for residential. It's not for commercial, it's not multifamily, it's not agriculture, it is for your homestead, where, and you get one in the state of Texas. Um, so just those kind of clarifications, a lot of people rely on the real estate agent when they buy or sell a property. Uh, agent, good agent says, hey, make sure you fill out the homestead exemption form. But if nothing else, any property owner that doesn't know if they have a homestead exemption or not, can go to their respective county website or call the county appraisal district and, um, and find the application, the applications are online for both Montgomery and Harris County, they may or may not be online for San Jacinto County. So with that said, it, that's the process. Uh, it's not that someone can apply for Lone Star exemption, but not apply for Harris County exemption or an E S D exemption, so I wanted to get that out of the way. Um, and then if you could go to the slides, the slide rather, that has the tax rates over the own, home state exemption, right there, that says it all to me. When you have a ten-cent tax rate, your home state exemption logically cannot be as high as a jurisdiction that has a twenty, twenty-five, thirty cent tax rate, because that's all extra money. So if they all lowered their tax rates from twelve, fourteen, fourteen, twenty, twenty-two, you get the idea, down to a dime, then it would be, uh, much, it'd be a challenge for them to offer twenty percent or high, uh, up to a twenty percent homestead exemption, because the tax rate produces the revenue. And then another comment I have has to do with respect to how the board policy here allows, not allows, uh, it, it's a goal to split the taxing, the revenue, uh, responsibilities among students, among property taxpayers, and among, uh, state funding. And then I'll finish with a couple of questions for Dr. Head with respect to state funding. Uh, while you said that it may be January, February before the state, before we know what the state is going to give, that's just the beginning of the session. And they're sitting on an extraordinarily high amount of money right now in, uh, the, uh, the rainy day fund, but this economic stabilization fund. Uh, that also could be one time, so I'd like for you maybe to comment on what the commission is looking like and their actions, and then how reliable, going into the February budget workshop, assuming what the state's gonna fund would be, when in fact session's gonna run to May, June, or who knows how long.
Yeah, I do think, uh, as you pointed out, the state is, uh, right now has a twenty-seven billion dollar surplus going into the session, so, and I do think community colleges are going to benefit from that. And the reason I said February is because I think we're gonna have a pretty good idea about who's gonna support increased, uh, funding for community colleges. Um, that's assuming that the economy stays whole, we don't go into a recession, that oil prices stay up, there's, there's three or four different assumptions on that. And so we, um, I'll have an idea in February, I won't have the total answer in February, we won't know that until it's actually approved by the legislature. So, through the commission, the, the commission is asking for an increase. Normally, community colleges get about two hundred million or less, now this time they're asking for six or seven hundred million. But, that is to what they call level up some of the smaller colleges, not all that money is coming, like, there's not some big windfall coming our way, do I, under the proposal, it's outcomes funding, which we'll do very well in, because our system is set up that way anyway, and we helped put that original model together, but I do think we're gonna benefit, we're just not going to know. I'll have some idea in February because of the people that are involved in the decision-making, which is gonna be the governor, the resident governor, the speaker of the house, and Senator Creighton, and Senator Bettencourt, and some of the rest of them, but, um, we're just, I, I'll have an idea, but I'm just not going to know. I think the key for us, I wouldn't say one big thing is assessed value and, uh, our enrollments. Um, again, I'm gonna mention this in just a minute, we're, we're down with enrollments again. And I'm not shocked by that, we're pretty close to what we estimated, but, uh, if, if we could see things turn around a little bit, and the economy stays healthy across the country and taxes, then I think we'd be in pretty good shape, I think it'll be a different discussion though. Right now, we're just speculating, in February, I think we'd be a little closer to what we actually, and then we'll put the scenarios together in February, but we won't make that decision until June. June or July, June usually, right, the final decision, we have to, we have to make a decision by July one anyway, so.
Yeah.
Chair, can I ask, uh, two more questions? If you don't mind, thank you, and did you want to say something, I thought I heard you start to respond.
Oh, no, I was just replying, yeah, our, in terms of June, uh, we have our typical, right, budget calendar is, yes, the February, uh, budget retreat, where we do the in-depth five-year financial plan, and then June, we have the budget workshop, for example. Um, so definitely with the deadlines, that is a good timing for having a, a decision made for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Good, thank you, maybe that's why we call it a budget workshop too, we have the workshop in February, but the, the timeline says it will take action later. My, um, other two quick questions, uh, or come, one's question and one's comment, is that in the state, when you're up there working with the legislature and also the state agencies, I've heard that you've, you promote our, our low tax rate, and that that's very well received by our legislative delegation, and they know what it is, and they've not encouraged us to raise it or lower it, they're happy with where we are with the tax rate, because they know the services that we're providing, and I think that's important. And then you talked about the unexpected, um, problems that we can have, hurricanes, et cetera, could you touch just real quick on what the financial impact of COVID was, for instance? And then also what, uh, potential federal and state unfunded mandates you've had to deal with as chancellor?
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, let me, let me point out also in the state legislature, there's still talk of them buying down the tax rate. Not only with just tax rates across, including community colleges, by the way, so we don't know how that's gonna be. There's also some other talk about putting a cap on what community colleges can chart, so we are not quite sure about that, and, I mean, and anybody that's dealt with the legislature knows that there's a lot of speculation about who's doing what, and so they throw these things out there, but we, we have to consider that, because they almost put a cap at three percent the last time, like they did with the ISTs. So on the community college, on the COVID, a couple of things, our enrollments are sitting about where they were in two thousand sixteen, uh, two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and that's a, it's just the way it is, and so we're gradually coming back up, the people are there, we know that, I mean, we're seeing us moving in the right direction, even though it, we, I didn't quite hit the numbers, like, we, I made it with the presidents and vice chancellors, I'm disappointed that we didn't grow three percent or so. But we, we presumed we were gonna be flat, and we are flat with students, but we're not flat with credit hours, we're down one point four percent, but that's the money, the credit hour. So on the COVID cost though, direct cost for us will probably, and I'm talking about lost revenue all the way around, probably forty, forty-five million? I'm talking about, uh, now, we, we granted, we got the stimulus money, and we gave most of that to students, but if you're talking about lost tuition and fees, we, um, had to pay for the P P E, we lost cafeteria money, the auxiliary money, we lost bookstore money. Uh, we lost a number of our tenants, which was one of the reasons we just sold the property over there at University Park. Is that?
Uh, yeah, that's a pretty good list, uh, I, uh, hesitate to say what the numbers, because I, I didn't look at it just prior to coming to this. Um, yeah, and yes, a lot of it has been covered with COVID stimulus funds, uh, but yes, as, as particular, our tuition and fees revenues uh, have declined certainly from where they were, and that's a recurring revenue source, so the COVID is only gonna help cover that through this year, uh, come next year, we will no longer have that to cover that difference in terms of a recurring source, but yes, it's, I think it's
Look at you the exact number, but I, I think so, out of the two hundred and fifteen or seventeen million dollars, we're giving about a hundred, and how much are we giving to students? About seventy, seventy percent of that, seventy-five percent?
Yeah, we were gonna do in total somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five million total out to students. Uh, right now, we are at about a hundred million of the total funds out to students.
So the rest of that, which is where I'm coming up with the forty to forty-five million, went to cover the expenses that we had because of COVID. So the, the most, we were required to give roughly fifty percent to the students, but we're giving seventy-five percent of the money to the students, and we're just covering our, trying to cover our losses, or lost revenue from the stim, with the stimulus money, if that answers your question.
It does, thank you, chair and colleagues, thanks for indulging all my questions, comments.
Well, I, we, you know, I, I, I don't think, again, I don't think the sky's falling, every time we think about the budget, so we, we don't think about what could happen, because this already happened to us, I mean, we know it could happen, we know that we could have a hurricane, and we know we could have COVID, we know we could have ice storms, that cost us money every time something happens like that. We've had energy surges, power surges, where, uh, we, we've blown out some of our equipment, that's a hundred thousand dollars here and a hundred thousand dollars there, so it's, um, we're not looking at somebody else going, well, this might happen, we know it can happen, because it's happened to us, and so, and I, I think, and from my perspective, I think for Jennifer's, we just need to be prepared for that, it, it's not so much, if it happens or not, we're prepared for it, we can deal with it if we keep our finances solid, which is why we spend so much time on finance. I mean, I have to tell you, our financial situation is why we're able to do all the things that we're able to do. We, we didn't lay off people, we didn't furlough people, we didn't, we're making progress, coming, we're gonna come out of this a lot quicker than anybody else. There's very few colleges, I think, that are in the financial shape that we're in, because of all the steps we took when COVID first hit. So cutting the budgets, not, not filling positions, um, eliminating positions, we, we just did all kinds of things to get ready for this, so. And who knows what's gonna happen with, uh, COVID this fall.
I do have a question, and hopefully you can, um, sort of educate us on that, so when, when we talk about the state budget, we know they make every two years, and so, um, their funding, how does that work? Because since they meet every two years, they're set funding just for that set of years, correct? It's not a perpetual type of funding, the same amount, so we have to look into that as well.
Yeah, so whatever money they give us will be for a two-year period. And then after that, it could either increase incrementally, or it can drop incrementally, depending on budget, so, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
And, and whether or not we receive money depends on the case we make and the value that people place on education and workforce, and really what the focus is right now, that workforce, uh, the community colleges can help train the workforce. And part of this is helping, when, when a hundred and forty-three out of the two hundred and fifty-four counties lost population, we're trying to help those small colleges, that's, that's over half the state lost, uh, population, so the, the state is trying to push more money out to those community colleges so that they can get technology and workforce, and it, we'll benefit from that, I mean, they're still giving money to us over that. But that's, that's only twenty percent of what we're, that's twenty percent of our budget, so it's not, it's a lot of money. But, um, it's eighty-five million dollars a year for us, but, um, we have to look at our local area, I mean, our, our financial wherewithal rests on what we're doing internally and what's happening here locally, not, not what's happening on the state.
Any further questions, trustees?
Madam Chair, I just got a cup, just a, just as kind of summarize, what I've heard in this discussion, the actions that we're gonna take, we, the board, the college, is we are definitely gonna look at in our budgeting cycle, you know, how we can lower these tax exemptions, we're gonna, we're gonna consider that, did I hear that correctly? Okay, yeah, or should I increase the taxes, excuse me. Um, and, and one, one point of information, um, uh, trustee Ayers Wilson, ma'am, are you there? Did I, and I, I thought I heard you suggest that what we should do is look for ways to communicate that, for, how should I say, uh, residents to apply for tax exemptions, that they are, they are available and they need to apply. We should look for ways in our literature, that's the only way we got, since we're not gonna go door to door, uh, as to publish that in, in obvious ways, we'll have to look at that, uh, to let people know that they have a right to a tax exemption, they should apply for it and how to do it. Did I hear, hear that as an action out of this?
That, that, that was the, um, thing, I, I'm, I'm more of a proactive type person, because I know people, I know in my community that are lower income, and that own homes that don't apply for it, is the reason why. If we can get them to say, okay, I know Lone Star is offering, or they're going to offer a tax, a homestead tax exemption, I've never did it before, um, I know it goes to the appraisal district. Um, I'm forty-two years old, I know that, but I also know that we have to start being more proactive with our community, you, you understand what I'm saying? That a way, we, let us be the leading and driving force, you know, for people to be more aware and be more conscious of what's going on in the communities.
Agreed, I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that the appraisal authority has improved its operations, and, and, and whenever you want to challenge or, or your, your appraisal and all that kind of stuff, it makes it a little easier, but I can, um, I still thought that the part where you request exemption was not as clear, I think that wasn't something you couldn't do online, you had to do it manually, so, you know, I know that's not our, I know, the appraisal district is, is responsible for that, but maybe we get it as, as a board, as a body, we, we can encourage or, or and communicate that information to our constituents, I mean, I'm sure we can work on that.
But it's not that easy. For us to, uh, matter of fact, we've got Jamie Swinburne sitting out here, it's not a stretch for us to include this in some of our marketing. Thank you, Jamie, for helping with the Houston Chronicle, but, um, we can, we can try to help get the word out that you need to fill out the form. And it's either that or the, the link to it online, I don't know, we can, we can talk about how we can do that, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
So I know this was a long discussion for those of you who are joining us here in person, those joining us virtually, um, in regards to the homestead and stick, um, exemption taxes. Just to kind of reiterate that we are sympathetic with the cost, and, um, just hearing all this background, we can certainly look at something like that. If we can move to the, uh, approval of the minutes, I hope everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes. Um, may I have a motion in a second to adopt the August eleventh workshop and regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are both. Perfect, uh, motion passes, thank you. Uh, next item is special reports and announcements.
So a couple of, uh, updates to the board. Just following up on some things I said earlier, so our head count is, we're down zero point three, it's less than a percent. So we were in our budget, we projected zero, but that was really for credit hours, so in, in our money, without, without spending a lot of time over this, so this, the three percent that there's zero, three percent decline, less than a one, is, I mean, we use that for, to tell people what our enrollment, our head count is. And then on the credit hours though, that's how many, uh, hours students are taking. And that's where our money comes from, that's actually tuition and fees, that's the local money that we have from students, and that's down one point four percent, so right now So right now, we, we are thinking that we would probably reduce the budget 1.4. I mean, 1 million, roughly 1 million. And then the contact hours is down, they're down point 0.9%. So that's less than one. That's what the state would pay us later, but they've got a new model coming. So we don't know yet what, what the impact on that's going to be. But it, it would be less money for us if everybody else, if everybody else increases, which we know they're not. So the main, the main point of this is I want you to know that we are going to be cutting the budget one point, about 1 million right now. Now, we had contingencies in there and so we're taking a look at how that might be. We're not going to be cutting instruction. It'll be non-essential services to get our budget. We don't want to, as we normally do, we do not want to wait. I mean, normally what we do is go ahead and make the cuts right now. We don't want to wait and hope that something happens. It's like your household. Something else might happen, so we just need to get our budget set where we are right now. But again, we had contingencies in the operating budget, so I think we're going to be fine there. We also, and I know the presidents are wondering and the faculty senate presidents, no, we know, we're, we're assessing the impact of online. So some of the colleges went down, but it could be because the students, and we're, we're running zip code analysis to see if those students that normally would go to UP or Tomball went over to online and then we'll make that adjustment accordingly. So I wanted, just a couple of things. We're up in dual credit by 900 students, which is, that's a good sign. That's a really good sign. We're up in workforce by 300 and that's a good sign. And new students, we went up 700. Where we, where we dropped is in continuing students. And I'm thinking that they probably went to work and so, or they didn't come back. So, you know, the first three items that I mentioned, the dual credit, the workforce and the new students, I think are positive. We need to work on continuing students or older students and, and returning students. So a couple of other items we have here, the online enrollment is at 3,700, which is good. We, we were going to be happy with 2,500 and then we adjusted that and then it's gone up. So I think we're moving in the right direction there under Dr. Keshfala. And we had a couple of board members show up for convocation, but we had 1,700 people at convocation, 1,700. And we had Mayor Turner talk. And I know we've all heard Mayor Turner talk. He's very inspirational to our, anybody that listens to him, whether it be employees or students or, and I don't care whether he live in Montgomery County or Harris County or what. He's one of the most dynamic speakers I've ever heard. So I was glad to see him there. He's very complimentary. Some of you know that we, we do, we work with Montgomery County and Harris County, but we work with all the cities. And we do, we have a number of contracts with the city of Houston. We do a lot of training for the city of Houston. You may not be aware of them, but we train the majority of the firefighters and the EMT for the city of Houston. We're working right now with their forensics department. And we're also doing training. We're working with sheriff's department and so with our Lu, with our new law enforcement academy, we have them involved with the advisory committee. So we've got relationships there, but I did want to let you know that 1,700 people showed up for convocation. And that concludes my, my comment.
Thank you. Board members, any special announcements or reports? Okay, none. Let's move to the consideration of the consent agenda. We do have two items that will be pulled out from the consent agenda. That would be item nine and 10.
They're just pulled off, they're just eliminated, period.
So they're going to pull out, postponed, correct? Removed, okay. So they're going to be removed, number nine and number 10.
And if you would please, I'd like to pull out item number eight.
Okay, so item number eight will be discussed separately.
Number three, please.
Any other items?
Number three.
Number three? Okay, any other items? So hearing none, may I have a motion in a second to adopt items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 11 and 12?
Motion.
And second? Can I have a second? Thank you, it's been moved improperly second. Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, and those opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. Item number three, may I have a motion in a second to consider item number three separately?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments?
I do. Um, as I was going through this and I saw Wells Fargo name, Wells Fargo's name listed. Um, with the recent things that Wells Fargo has been sued for and them being a part of racially discriminating against minorities, I really think we don't, Longstar does not need to do business with Wells Fargo, being that we are a minority-based college. It just doesn't make sense to me. So that's why I'm pulling it, because I, I really think we have to really consider who we're doing business with.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of item number three, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Trustee Wilson?
Correct.
Trustee Pierce? If you would like to vote, we would need to have the, your camera on, on, on your face. If you would like to vote for this particular. I don't think she's there. Okay, item number three passes. Next item is number eight, may I have a motion in a second to consider item number eight separately?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly second, comments or questions, please?
I had that removed and I have no comment or questions.
Okay, no comments or questions? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. So we have one abstained from item number eight. Can we go back to all those in favor for item number eight?
I'm going to abstain from eight as well.
Madam Chair, I recommend you recall.
Yes, let's do a roll call. So number, item number eight. Can we have, just one second. Trustee Mario?
Aye.
Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan? Trustee vote?
Abstained.
Okay. Trustee Kingslayer, trustee Wilson?
Abstained.
And trustee Pierce is not, it's not there. And myself, aye. So item number eight passes.
Chair?
Okay.
Chair?
Okay. Yes.
Unfortunately, under our board policy, we need five affirmative votes. So even if it's a majority without the five affirmative votes, the items fail.
Okay, so item number eight does not pass. Thank you for clarification. It's always good to have clarification on the spot. Yes. Okay, next item is policy reports and considerations. Do we have anything? I don't think so, correct? Next is financial reports. Jennifer, once again.
Yes, thank you. This report will actually be relatively brief because right now we are at report financial statements for the month ended July 31st, 2022, which is last fiscal year, but it's 11 months into the year. So really next month is when I will have the August 31st financials, which will be the, the full fiscal year for last year. It would, next month, it'll just still be preliminary numbers. It's not the final audit, but I'm going to show these numbers here. But understanding that it's 11 months worth of last fiscal year, so close to having the full year. But on revenues, and a lot of these trends are the same trends that we've been seeing throughout the year, is we did build a budget based on 0% change in credit hours from students. And then we did have a decline. So that decline in revenues is reflective by the percentage of revenues collected so far of 385 million is 96% being lower than the same point in time in prior years. Expenditures along the way, as, as we've seen the credit hours come in lower than what was budgeted, we then did also make the budget reductions. So similarly, we will see the percentage as of July 31st. We had spent 303 million, which is 78% of the budgeted amount. So then from those charts here, now we're just showing what the forecasted budget variance is. And this is the same that I've shared in prior months. We are not going to update the forecast yet when we are currently working on closing the year-end books. And over the next couple of months, I will be able to report the final year-end numbers. But from the prior months that, that we had already forecasted, we were expecting tuition and fees to be down the 4 million from the amount that was budgeted. For that portion alone, I'm not expecting that to change that significantly because even though summer was also down, we did then also gain some additional credit hours from next start, like the second eight-week terms, for example, from the spring semester that should offset each other. And as I've already said, during the course of the year, as we see revenues come in less than what was budgeted, we then make the corresponding budget reduction. So that same 4 million, we did reduce campuses and system office areas. We all made budget reductions first in the fall term and then again in the spring term as each term's credit hours came in. And then the last thing I would like to record is exciting news on our FEMA reimbursements, is we did receive 8.8 million this past month from FEMA. I think that's one of the largest chunks that we have received so far. So we are getting there. It was received in August. So you do have the financial statements in your board packet for the Hurricane Harvey fund. But that's, it, it's as of July, July 31st. This, these funds were received in August. So I'm going to include a slide specifically on where we stand with the Hurricane Harvey funds next month to show the total expenditures was 51.7 million. That number's been relatively settled for some time now on what we spent or what it cost us. But then to also update on what we have been able to receive to offset those costs. So I'll give a full update next month.
From FEMA or TIDOM?
The way it flows is from FEMA to TIDOM to us.
I just want to make sure the board understood that, that so FEMA gives the money to the Texas Emergency Management Department, something like that, to TIDOM. So it, it just kind of trickles, and I do mean trickles. So, so we have to fill out additional, we fill it out for FEMA. Then they turn it over to, to give the money to the Texas state and then we fill out more paperwork. So it's a five-year process, at least a five-year process, so.
Yes. But I was very excited that we received 8.8 million.
We should be excited, yes.
Because I think prior reports that I've given, it was a few hundred thousand here, a few hundred thousand there. I think there was one other chunk that maybe a year ago that was around 9 million. So we, that, that was one of our largest reimbursements. This is, you know, a second one. So this one was.
So you've been working on this, when, when did Harvey?
To 17, August of 17, five years, five plus years now.
So you've been working on this since 2017? Thank you, Jennifer.
And to my whole team. They, they put, they've put in way more hours on it than I personally have. Spreadsheets with literally thousands of rows on it. Part of the documentation is, is literally sending in all of the invoices of everything that we paid, right? 52 million worth of invoices and proof that we paid them. So really the work has been the, the team here at Longstar College being very persistent.
Yes, thank you so much for your team. Any other?
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Chair could ask a question of Ms. Mott, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Couldn't help but notice the capital expenditure number down at the bottom being as low as it is. What does that capture?
That is capital expenditure items that are in our operating bu, budget. This is not bond-funded capital projects. That is a whole separate fund because we are legally required to put the bond proceeds that are paying for construction projects in a separate fund. So this, this is relative, yes, clearly relatively small items that was bought with the operating dollars.
They somewhat discretionary, would that be one, one way to look at it? Fall outside of the capital, outside of the bond program?
Yes, yes, these fall outside of the bond program.
Okay.
I would, I could find out for you what comprises the 164,000?
Just curious, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Any future agenda items, trustees?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry to talk so much tonight, it's not my normal style. One item that I would like to get a report on, and I'll let you and the chancellor work out if it's a board item or not. And there's no timing on this, it's not time-sensitive. Would be a, what I'll call a flood mitigation report on all our facilities. For instance, we know Kingwood floods, you know, what we're doing there. But what other facilities have been evaluated for potential flooding? And just if you could kind of take that and run with it and maybe report to the board or report back to me? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We can certainly do a presentation and. We're working on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So it is 6:28 PM and the chair adjourns this meeting. Thank you so much for joining us.